Did you do that? Are those prescriptions? Oh, you gotta get them fixed. Can I get you a cup of coffee? It's right there.
Okay. I have to pay attention to what I'm gonna say. It's your job. On record?
So who's in charge? City or agency? Which one are you guys?
Oh, I thought you were. Okay. Call for it. Joint City Council Urban Renewal Agency Work Session, Monday, July 24th. I was waiting for the mayor to start. Apologize for the delay. Roll call, please. We sent us a work session. Should we just?
Dick Anders.
Judy Casper.
Susan Walkie.
Don Williams.
Deanna Hinton.
Kip Ward.
Heath Killian.
Mr. Drystock.
Madam Chair, if I could just a quick question? Am I missing something? I'm looking in the agenda for today and for the city website. I don't see this listed. Is it?
Ed Drystock.
Richard Townsend.
Allison Robertson.
Kathy Steer, city recorder. It's listed under Urban Renewal.
It says 4:45, Joint City Council and Urban Renewal Agency Work Session.
Okay, I'm clicking on something different.
So, Mrs. Robertson?
Yes. Thanks, everyone, for being here. We wanted to continue this meeting from the May 15th work session on economic development. And at the May 15th meeting, we heard an update from the Bay Area Merchants Association on their downtown manager. And we also heard how staff is proceeding with commercial development for the four urban renewal properties. So this meeting is really to continue from that conversation on economic development, which, as we know, is a very broad topic. The goals of this work session are basically just to provide council and the urban renewal agency with information so that you all know the direction that staff is going, and then you can redirect as needed. We also want to ask the larger question, does the council or urban renewal agency want to move beyond tourism? And if so, what's the market and what are our advantages? And then also keep the conversation on traditional economic development activities like jobs, business recruitment, business expansion, things like that. So what is economic development? Each community's economy is unique, and there are lots of ways to define economic development. For example, some I've heard say retail follows rooftops, or housing is economic development. Without people in the area, there's no commerce. Broadly speaking, economic development is about actions taken by an organization in order to do two things. Improve the economic situation of local residents. This translates into disposable income and assets. And local businesses, which is profitability and growth. And the second thing, enhance the community's quality of life as a whole. And this means appearance, safety, networks, gathering places, and a sense of positive momentum. So that's a pretty big definition. Covers many things. This also includes a focus on jobs, business expansion, attraction, and recruitment. And as we know, housing, jobs, and transportation are all very closely linked in terms of their impact on one another. As a note, the Housing Needs Analysis Recommendations, which were completed a couple weeks ago by the Planning Department, will be discussed at a council work session on August 7th. So this part of the economic development conversation will not include housing. Some of our partners in economic development are the Small Business Development Center, Chamber of Commerce, Bay Area Merchants Association, Economic Development Alliance of Lincoln County, Chinook Winds Casino and Resort, North Lincoln County Historical Museum. We have many, many partners that are working on all of these efforts together. The what and the how of economic development of each of the following topics, we're gonna go through fairly quickly at a high level because we have a lot to cover. And then we'll be able to talk about what we're gonna move ahead. And then we'll have time after the presentation for any questions. So the first topic we have is improving our product. And this includes streetscape, parking requirements, the Roger Brooks Report action items to encourage redevelopment, and also storefront improvements. And the way that we would achieve this would be through toolkits to create incentives to partner with the city and with urban renewal. The VCB grant program, and then also infrastructure improvements, which we would continue reinvestment by the city's Public Works Department and the urban renewal agency. And then we're also exploring community broadband, which has been led by Councilor Casper. And then we have a meeting for that community meeting on September 16th. So we won't be going into that topic in great detail. But we also have here tonight Richard Townsend, the Planning Director, and Ed Drystock, the Visitors and Convention Bureau Director. So they can speak about the things that they're working on as well, because this is really a team effort and everyone is doing their part. So, Ed, do you wanna talk a little bit about the VCB grant program?
Sure. As a lot of you probably know, there's about $200,000 in the VCB budget for the grant program. The VCB committee spent actually a couple of years reviewing grant programs in other cities and changing the guidelines and whatnot. One of the changes that was in there was the ability for a business to make a case they can elevate what they are into a tourist attraction through use of grant money. And we've seen the first instance of that up at the Bejew Theater. I don't know if you've been by it lately, but the marquee's been repainted, the neon is working for the first time in years, the whole facade of the building has been upgraded. They're scheduled to get new glass block in. And they were given another grant during this last session that's gonna allow them to replace the seats and reinstitute the Made in Oregon Film Festival. You're gonna be seeing the Bejew become more and more of an event venue in addition to being a classic movie theater and a tourism attraction in its own right. So, you know, I'm kind of excited because it's something concrete I can drive by and see, especially at night when the neons fired up. And if you look at that part of town, it's also a little infectious. I mean, it started with Prehistoric coming in and redoing the building, the facade. The Old Pumpkin Barriers has become the grill. My Petite Sweet has come in and renovated the space for the bakery. So you can see Ocean Lake kind of generally, you know, lifting up a little bit. The facade of the Cruisin' was remodeled and painted. That all translates, am I talking too long? Into a, you know, I think where my department has the most impact. The concept is called Lifestyle Entrepreneurship, where if you have a place that's attractive and fun and has all the natural beauty that we have, that's a great place to live. You can attract people who are entrepreneurs who can do what they do from anywhere. And, you know, what I'm hoping to see in Lincoln City is that tipping point to where, wow, I'd really like to live there. I visited that place. It is really great and a lot of fun. I'm gonna move my business here. So my little corner of economic development, I think, resides in that space. You know, how do we tell people about everything that we have? How do we promote Lincoln City as a great place to visit? Demonstrating, once they get here, that it really is, ergo, it's a great place to live.
Richard, do you wanna add anything on that section?
Yeah, if I can add a little bit, sort of building on particularly what Ed just said about the Ocean Lake area. You'll hear, oh, actually, the city council will hear later when we're talking about the Imagine Lincoln City project that we started doing a little bit of surveying yesterday at the farmer's market. We talked to people. And one of the things we heard a lot about was improving the appearance of the community and how important that people think that is. And so we are pursuing those kinds of ideas. And not only are we looking at things like what we can do with the zoning ordinance to encourage things, but also what we can do to get out of the way. And we've got some ideas that we're working on that to make it, to promote economic redevelopment and to improve the appearance of commercial areas.
The next topic that we wanna cover is marketing and branding Lincoln City. And this includes determining Lincoln City's strengths and weaknesses. So what do we have that's unique to make businesses wanna locate here and which weaknesses can be easily improved? How are people going to be working remotely, maybe, in the future? We need to try to accommodate how new technologies are really helping to increase our job base and our, spread our economy out. Ed, do you wanna speak about the branding project for the city that you're working on?
Yeah, we're, we've kicked off the second try at the City Branding Project. And as Kip's pointed out on numerous occasions, I'm a cheapskate, and I tried to take some shortcuts the first run we made at it. And I apologize, that turned out not to be the way to do it. We have a branding communications firm that we're working with. We've had the first couple of meetings with them. They're gonna be presenting their initial findings and direction to Ron Chandler, the city manager. The branding project, you have to understand, is not a VCB project, other than it was my budget they pointed toward and I get to pay for it. The project itself is coming out of the city manager's office. And it will impact the VCB the same way it's going to impact Public Works and Water and Sewer and maintenance and everybody else in the city. The goal is to clearly define what Lincoln City is all about and find a way to graphically present that. So instead of having 13 different city logos like we have now, they'll be the basis of one. The city will have a typeface that we use on everything. It'll have a color palette that we use on everything. It'll have a common graphic look and feel. We'll have basically a graphic standards manual for the city of Lincoln City. So anything the city does will have that family look and feel to it. And hopefully, one of the results is, from you rolling into town up by the casino until you're about to roll out of town down in Cutler City, there are all sorts of cues to let you know that this long, linear, skinny thing that you're driving through is all the same thing, that it's all Lincoln City. And it's hopefully gonna give us a consistency, not only in advertising and promotion that the VCB does, but in all of our signage and all of our wayfinding and the look and feel of the town, it's gonna give us a commonality that's gonna allow us to present Lincoln City as a unified brand, as something that somebody can wrap their arms around, as something that stands for a great beach town where there's a lot of fun.
Thanks. And then the last thing that we have under marketing and branding Lincoln City is events and festivals. Ed, would you mind speaking a little bit about that?
Yeah, to paraphrase W.C. Fields, events are like elephants to me. I like to look at them, but I wouldn't wanna own one. It's, the VCB is actually trying to get out of the events business and replace that with a group sales effort. That said, we've been pretty aggressive on coming up with new events, finding partners who are interested in developing them, and walking them through that first year, handing over the keys, and launching it from there. We did Chowder and Brew Fest last year for the first time. That is now owned and operated and run by the Chamber of Commerce. I went to a Tour to Die For meeting the other day, sat there with my arms crossed, didn't say two words. And the museum and the cemetery and the folks at Theater West picked up the ball and they're running with it. We're probably gonna be doing the same thing down in Taft as they move forward to put together the Haunted Taft Halloween Promotion. So in terms of events, we want big, signature city events, but the city doesn't wanna own them. One of the things that happened with Chowder and Brew Fest, that was the first one we went down the pike, we sat down with a bunch of business people, and we laid everything out on a spreadsheet. Here's what we think everything is gonna cost, and here's how much revenue we think we're gonna get. We basically built a P&amp;L statement on the best assumptions that we had. And those business people looked at it and said, you have $45,000 worth of expense in this thing. That's unacceptable. And by the time they were done, we had 23. That's what we need, and that's how events should work. They should be healthy events with lots of folks coming to them that make a big impact, that extend our message out of town, that make people wanna come here. That's best handled over in the private sector. And knock on wood, so far, that's exactly how it's, how it's working. Pixie Fest is the same way, with all the partners involved with that, the casino in Comonos and the outlet mall and Farmers Insurance and everybody else that stepped up. You know, that was kind of a one and done with the VCB. We ate and lived and breathed that thing for months. Next time around, they know how to run it. It's theirs, and it's probably gonna do a lot better than the first one. So in terms of festivals and events, we've got the grant program that is supporting those and helping them get started and getting them launched. And I think what we have, and it's really early yet, but I think what we have is a very healthy incubator program where we can get these things up and running. They can be big draws that introduce summer like Pixie Fest, that kick off the fall season like Chowder and Brew Fest, that start to create product within a holiday period like a Tour to Die For and Haunted Taft. But it's also going to allow us, as the city, to step back and let business people make those things bigger and better and leaner and more efficient and better. And, you know, in aggregate, you're gonna see the city doing less and less in that area, but I think you're gonna see more and more in terms of events and festivals and then that type of thing, which, again, make the city more attractive, give people a reason to come try us out, and hopefully get people to fall in love with Lincoln City to where they move a business here, they retire here, they decide one way or another to live here.
Thanks. So another larger-scale topic that we have is tools to partner with the private sector. And some of those things would be, as Richard Townsend mentioned already, reviewing the zoning. We also have revisit the existing and new urban renewal agency tools, the toolbox that you all have seen many times. We will be bringing that back to you as we have more funds available to consider some of the other concept tools. And then along with that is establish new city economic development tools. As you might recall, as part of the new budget process, there are some funds available as a separate economic development fund, and you all have the opportunity to create some new tools, whether similar to the urban renewal agency tools or different, that would work to accomplish some of these goals. Another thing is the Oregon Main Streets Program through Business Oregon. And there's no membership fee to become a Main Streets community. The program provides invitations to workshops and conferences, community presentations, reconnaissance-level historic building surveys, and phone consultations, among other services. And the last thing is an underutilized properties grant with Business Oregon that will come in and take a look at possibly what impediments are in the way of other larger commercial properties that have not redeveloped. Yeah.
I wanna go back to the first on this list, reviewing zoning. As you all know, we're starting out on a new comprehensive plan process. And I expect one of the results of that process to be substantial changes to our zoning ordinance as a result of the public involvement program, which we expect to be hearing from people about what's in the way, what problems we have, and those kinds of things. I think the Ocean Lake is a really good example of where there is something in the way of economic development there. The majority of businesses in Ocean Lake don't have off-street parking or have very little off-street parking. But the requirement is, if you want to redevelop those properties, to the extent of even just a little bit over 50% of the value of the improvements are there, you have to provide off-street parking. And you can't do that. There just isn't land for that. There are thriving businesses there that don't have parking. And as we wanna look at, maybe there isn't a need for that off-street parking requirement. And without that off-street parking requirement, would that encourage redevelopment of those properties and improvement of those properties? And get us even more thriving businesses there, more economic returns for the property owners? So those are the kinds of things we'll be looking at.
The last two higher-level topics are new urban renewal districts. And if the city were interested in creating a new urban renewal district, the process takes about one and a half years to establish. There are feasibility studies and public involvement and money for a consultant to do all of those calculations and help establish what the goals of a new district would be. And the last larger overview topic is the Economic Opportunities Analysis. There are some recommended policies to implement. And Richard, if you'd like to go over those?
Sure. There's, what, over three pages of recommendations and policies that actually have been adopted as part of the, as the economy policies for the comprehensive plan. I wouldn't go into all of them. There's, you know, 30 or 40 of them. But there's six in particular that I think we should take a hard look at, and we can kick off fairly quickly. And under the rubric of planning, which is to coordinate economic development efforts with local and regional partners, one of the recommendations or one of the policies is to establish an economic development committee or commission with representatives from the city, economic development partners, and local businesses and residents. Then work with the committee and commission to prepare a five-year economic development strategy and action plan that implements the community vision and goals using recommendations in the Economic Opportunities Analysis. In the action plan, assign responsibilities, timeframe, and tools for the city and other partners to use, and a method for evaluating progress. So what this is saying is just have a, basically have a task force that goes out and is fairly aggressively pursuing economic development and having a strategy and then implementing it within the plan, having timetables so that it's not just a plan. We did a nice plan and then you never look at it again, where we actually have an action plan and it's tasked to be done, timetables to achieve those things. And then coordinate economic development efforts with local and regional economic development agencies and organizations, including the Urban Renewal Agency, Lincoln City Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Alliance of Lincoln County, and others through representation at group meetings, periodic meetings with key individuals and review of new plans and publications. So it's an ongoing work with others, do outreach, and that sort of thing. Then there are three more under new businesses, about encourage businesses that provide family wage jobs to locate in Lincoln City. One is to work with the Chamber of Commerce and other partners to develop a marketing plan and materials that describe Lincoln City's advantages and amenities for businesses. Another, review the municipal code to identify opportunities to clarify and where possible, simplify Lincoln City's zoning code and land use application processes. And I talked about that a little bit already. And then employ incentives to lower development costs, such as deferral of systems development charges or property tax abatement, for example, use of an enterprise zone. We do have an enterprise zone in Lincoln City that was, I think, established in 2009 and revised in 2013. And I was looking at the map of the enterprise zone recently, and I think it warrants another look at some, deleting some properties and probably adding significantly other properties. And what the enterprise zone does is it's property tax abatement on, not on the land, but on new construction, new equipment, and those kinds of things. It can be full tax abatement for three to five years, and that can certainly help make a development more likely to happen and be profitable. So we need to take a broader look at that. So there's a whole bunch of others, but those are key ones that I think we can get started on essentially right away.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Ms. Hinton.
Sorry, you two confused me. Do you, do we have a copy of what you were just reading from?
Probably not in front of you right now, but I mean, I think you adopted this, it's in your packet, from a few weeks ago?
On page 32 and 33 of the Economic Opportunities Analysis.
Sorry, I didn't burn it.
So that covers our 10,000-foot overview of topics. We're happy to take questions. And then, just to kind of let you know, 5:45, we have an urban renewal agency meeting. And the purpose of that meeting, although it's only 15 minutes, was really to create some time for you if you had any action items from this work session that you wanted to take. And then that opportunity would also be available for the city council to take any actions on this work session at 6 o'clock. Since this is a joint session, we just wanted to respect that opportunity for you all to do, if so chosen.
If I can also, again, add one more thing. We are also starting to take a hard look at our sign ordinance provisions, working with the city attorney, and will also be doing outreach to businesses and others on whatever might be problematic in our sign ordinance, both from an economic development standard, but also in terms of compliance with federal law and those types of things.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Sounds great. Thank you. It kinda reminds me, though, of an old saying, no port is a good one if you don't know where you're sailing. And, you know, we don't have an airport, we don't have air transportation, we don't have ports and shipping and rail. And, you know, that's okay. Portland doesn't have a beach and an ocean. And I think we need to always remember that we need to play to our strong suit, which in the beginning is tourism. And the nicer the town, the better grade of tourism that you get. And follows into retirement. Those two work hand in hand, and we have to be careful not to forget those because each is interdependent upon one another. And done properly, it'll guarantee, I think, prosperity that we're looking for. And getting the, you know, we live in a fishbowl, no algae allowed. And getting rid of that blight is the first step to appeal to a higher-income market, which will bring higher wages and more affordable housing and more prosperity. And I think your idea about Ocean Lake is exactly right. It's a contagion, and it started there. It's infected. And it's infected, for once, with something good. Those shops are getting to be very nice. And as they do, they're gonna get more pedestrian traffic, and the rents are gonna go up, and they'll prosper. So another thing, I'll be quiet in a minute, that I wanted to bring up is, I was walking, went for a little walk today down to Ocean Lake, you know, and we have that piece of property that we have that's next to the hotel, which, the hotel's kinda nice-looking, you know? I don't have too much against that. But it reminds me, you know, the next big thing that we're gonna, if we're not careful, if we're not proactive, is the solution that we're gonna have to solve is too much traffic. That's blight on wheels. And that's something that we have to And that's something that we have to keep in mind. And one of the ways, or at least, you know, maybe the solution's multi-folded, but one of the ways is to move, if you can't move Highway 101, move our business district down where the hotels are and somehow get restaurants and little shops going there because the hotels will feed them. And they won't get in their car and put more traffic in town. People can walk to their, walk to the restaurants, and they can walk to the little shops. And thinking Nye Beach, if you, you know, that started from somewhere, and all the big things have little beginnings. So I would hope that we, that we set that as part of a goal, too, is to take a look at some alternative business sites because we don't have, we don't have a lot of that hard, heavy manufacturing, or very little of any of it. So that's my comments.
So in, in Ocean Lake in particular, one of the things that we did through the Urban Renewal Project that was done there and then the zoning that went with it was to try to do some things that encouraged that kind of off-101 economic development. And we've seen a little bit of it, and that city property that we're looking at marketing, the urban renewals, looking at marketing, can be another piece of that. I think it's, it'll probably be an incremental process and a slow process, but I think ultimately that kind of thing can end up happening, and I think it's quite desirable. If you look at places, I think like Ashland or Cannon Beach or something, where their main business district is not on the main highway, and they're very successful communities and very attractive communities, and we should be, there are good things to emulate.
And every retiree started out as a tourist, so they have to see what, they have to like what they see as a tourist. And then when they want to retire, they'll come here, and that'll stabilize the economy. Like if you have a good tourist base, or a retirement base, it actually puts as much money into the economy as tourism. So that's that hand-in-hand thing.
Madam Chair. Ed, I wonder if you could expand a little bit about your, when you were talking about your festivals and events, and I get the concept, and I appreciate not wanting to be in the event business, so I'm not going there. But I'm wondering about how do we capitalize on, for example, the kite festival? I think you still, you know, are lead on that, and it's a great event for a coastal community, given the weather. The other is, I think about one that's, we've been fortunate to have, is the Slets Bay Music Festival, that has seemed to have grown and grown. And, you know, I'm thinking of other music festivals around the country or other countries, somehow capitalizing on, you know, a venue of the ocean. And, you know, I don't know about expanding, but certainly engulfing more of the community. This seems to be the Slets, to pick on the Slets Music Festival. It's a nice event, but it doesn't seem to engage the community as a, as a whole. Still a bit isolated, different venues. And so I'm, I guess where I'm going, I'm wondering, are those the kind of expansive festivals that you're thinking about or you're able to somehow encourage expansion of to be real mainstays? Or am I off-base? Or, you know, and there's certainly nothing wrong with Sandcastle or, you know, the Brew Fest or, you know, other ones, too, but they seem to be, you know, short, hour-wise, and not, not unique by any means.
Well, the, the thing that's, that's nice about Slets Bay Music Festival, and then you mentioned it's multi-venue, and, you know, we don't have a performing arts center where everything happens in the one place. That's actually kind of cool because it's, it's the only one I can think of here in Lincoln City where it unites the whole city. It happens all over the city. There are things that happen, you know, down at Salashan, but there's also things that happen in the community center. They have events in churches around town. I just like it because it, it spans the length and breadth of the town, which is, which is pretty cool. Having multi-day festivals like that, where they stretch out for a week or two weeks, yeah, I would love to see us do more things than that, like that. In terms of, you know, what we'll develop in the future, that depends on the interest we can bring together, whether or not we can find people that are willing to take that ball and run with it after we get it up and running. And identifying interests like classical music, what the Slets Bay Festival or the, you know, the folks that are into historical things like we do Tour to Die For, you know, what are those, what are those affinities, what are those interests that we could build a festival around? I'd love to see more music happening here. You know, where, where we put it is always a challenge, and it's even a challenge for, for the folks at the Slets Bay Music Festival. We just don't have as many or as big a venue as, I kind of wish we did.
So should that be a vision? I guess I've attended events in all those various locations, and one of the things that I miss is our biggest asset, the ocean. You know, so I'm envisioning, you know, a performance opportunity center, all glass, overlooking the ocean. And it just, for a two-week period, happens to be occupied by Slets Bay Music, or three weeks or something. But somehow, it's a, some kind of a facility that can attract more to show off our ocean.
If you did something like that, it would probably need to be multipurpose. Because you're not going to have, I'm saying this now, and somebody will probably prove me wrong, but, you know, have, you have the showcase festival in it for two weeks, but it needs to have other things to help pay for it. The Performing Arts Center down in Newport, in addition to the big stage with the nice risers and all those things that I wish we had here somewhere, they, they also have meeting room space. So there's small conventions and meetings and that type of thing, which helps pay for that facility when there's not a, a performance going on or a festival happening there.
Madam Chair. Allison, the, as you were talking, I'm glad Mr. Townsend read some of those things in the, I don't know what we call it.
Economic Opportunities Analysis.
Economic Opportunities. You know, I'm thinking of, I was touring, I think, Ben's city website at one point, and I came across an invitation, actually, an invitation to do business in Bend. So as I was looking for other things, but somehow, you know, there was this extension of an invite, you know, relocate your business. So I noticed you, that's included in, in some of the things we talked about, but I, I think we need to remember that we need to be asking for the business, so to speak, and certainly, whatever venue that is, a website or whatever, that we're asking them and inviting them to, you know, touch us, I guess would be the way, and see how helpful and full we can be to introduce them to the city. I'm pretty sure it was Ben that I was dumbfounded by how aggressive they became with that kind of a maneuver.
I'll take a look and check it out.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I agree with you, Mr. Anderson.
That's one.
That's one, yeah. You know, I think that Slets Bay Music Festival, its greatest asset is that the people that attracts are generally high-income, big-spending comparative-like people. And I think it really does its job in that way.
Madam Chair. Ed, or anyone, I guess, can you speak to Run 21's success at all and that venue that perhaps we could partner with Otis? I have to admit, I haven't attended Run 21 yet. But from what I understand, it is successful. It's a, you know, a huge rally and, you know, the, the whole thing with bikers is to be able to afford a $20,000 Harley-Davidson, I will guarantee a lot of those guys are worth Adonis, you know.
My point is, we're talking about where will we do these things, and there's a prime piece of land out there. It wouldn't impact us traffic-wise. If people want to come visit the town individually outside of the event, they can. And I noticed it didn't really hurt us when they left because they were already halfway out of there. And I just think it's a good opportunity to partner with them. I don't even know what they call themselves. Are they government? Is there a mayor or just a private owner?
Gary?
Yeah. No, but I don't know what it's called technically. So anyway, but that seems a perfect venue to work out of.
If we ever wanted to do a really big music festival, an outdoor event, you know, anything like that, that'd be great. And there's no competition up there. It's not like they're going to stay in a hotel in Otis.
Exactly.
You know, we would get the business, so.
Exactly. So that's my thoughts on that.
And not all the motorcycles camped out there this weekend. There were a lot in my neighborhood.
And I'd like to, if I could continue, just, I don't want to disagree with Mr. Ward too much, but he said it twice now, so I'm going to throw in my two cents about the, you know, attracting the higher economic bracket while, I think we all appreciate that, I think there's something really nice about Lincoln City being an affordable place, too. And I go back to when I was a young parent, that this is somewhere I could come, and I can afford to stay in a hotel, and I can afford to go to a restaurant or, you know, to the beach, and I don't want to lose that, that element of Lincoln City. I don't want to become, and no offense to my friends in Cannon Beach, but I don't want to be Cannon Beach. But we stopped going to Cannon Beach specifically for that reason. That's it.
Good information to have.
Madam Chair. Allison, could you go back? I guess I'm trying to figure out, and Maber wasn't paying attention, the purpose for a meeting of Urban Renewal for 15 minutes, there might be the possibility that we'd want to do something. Can you help me figure out what I might want to do?
Wink, wink. Actually, this was just to respond to the public meeting law with regards to how to do a joint meeting and how to reflect that in the minutes and actions of each agency. And so to make that as clean as possible, we had a joint work session, which we have had before. We're also transitioning over to a new software with the packets, and so part of that is staff learning curve and trying to make sure that we have all the correct templates for each type of meeting in place. And so really, the, the 15-minute meeting, we didn't have anything in particular, we just wanted to allow you all the opportunity to take action, which, again, you would have at 6 o'clock for council and at 5:45 for urban renewal. So nothing in particular we had in mind, just respecting what the process is.
So the things we've talked about, that you've talked about and shared with us, are in motion?
Yes.
You don't need any specific direction, continue as is, hold back?
Yeah, I mean, you're.
You're not waiting on us for anything?
No, your comments and questions are always welcome and encouraged. They help us kind of get a sense of what your priorities are. At some point, as Richard mentioned, with the economic opportunities analysis and the kind of low-hanging fruit or the, the things that we really will be moving ahead earlier than later, those six things that he mentioned, you know, forming an economic development committee, I think, is really key, and, and then a strategy and action plan. I think, you know, those are not things we can do in a week. They are going to take some time, but they will help provide a better foundation and direction and accountability for what kinds of benchmarks are reasonable, what kinds of investment is needed in order to accomplish those goals. So it's going to be a more in-depth conversation as we move things along, but overall for tonight, this is kind of a lot to go over, but we're slowly working on all of those things, but probably more with the emphasis of this kind of marketing, branding, all these things are going to dovetail with one another and hopefully fall together into a nice, neat package with five-year action steps.
In my, I think, last question, in your cover memo, you talked about four Urban Renewal Agency commercial properties. It's always a test for me to name the four. I came up with five, so I'm concerned of, I've got Northwest 15th. I've got Southwest 51st, Southeast 32nd, and then it was a toss-up with the Old Fire Station piece or Hostettler Park.
Yes, so the, the Old Fire Station is city-owned.
Oh, okay.
And it is in the Urban Renewal District, so Urban Renewal has the opportunity to partner somehow with whatever the city decides they want to do with that property. And so you're, you're right, the four are really the undeveloped properties that do not have any buildings on them at this time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
When we were at the dinner with the tribe last week, we talked about perhaps working with the Indians regarding Hostettler Park, working with them to establish whether or not we could use some type of interpretive center there. And I was just wondering if the other counselors had had time to think about that and would support that and would want to start some basic conversations? So I'm asking.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry, are you going to go ahead?
Yeah, I remember when you said that, and I thought it was a really excellent idea. There are so many things in the city that are, were, are originally Slets Tribe ground and ceremonial areas. The only time I've really heard a discussion of it was when we did the Tour to Die For, they talked about the Devil's Lake folklore. And then one time, many years ago, there was a bus that went around the city in February, Lincoln Days or something, and they talked about the footpaths that the Indians traversed throughout the city. I think it would be a great honor if we did something with the tribes, as so many other cities have in our area. We haven't really acknowledged all that they've contributed to us.
Madam Chair. Well, I had this discussion with, with the tribe and others about two years ago, because it is, I agree with you, that it's, it's a shame that we don't have more interaction. We have such a history together that there should be more. And I spoke with the other coastal, central coast mayors about this, and they all agreed that part of us tying our towns together, that could be the thread that ties it together. As we move down the coast, you can have different interpretive centers or dioramas, if that's the right word. I brought up, I remember as a child visiting Chief Luluska in Vancouver, Washington, and every school went there every year. And it was a long house, and he would come out and tell stories and share the costumes and the like. And I think it's just an ideal opportunity. One idea I floated out to some of the tribe members was, down on Southwest 51st, we have that land, and would that be an ideal interpretive center? That we could do something with, not just them, but with the ocean, hunting, fishing, collecting, gathering, cooking. And then that overflowed into discussion of our culinary center and also encouraging indigenous foods to be prepared and served and sold here. So I'm with Mr. Ward on this 100%. I think it's long overdue.
I agree.
So, Madam Chair, where do we go from here?
I'm sorry.
We can't make decisions during the work session. We have to wait a few minutes.
If I might, the, probably the first is another discussion with the Confederate tribes and see what is it they would like to put forward. And then we have to kind of narrow it down to a couple ideas, and then probably turn it over to Ed and the company and let him do his magic, and then we decide where, if it's our land. And I know they're doing some great things with their interpretive center and their, what's the word I'm looking for? Not their museum, but their, oh, it's out in Slets, repository. It's a terrific place to visit, all their history, and we can do that here. So we've got the land, we know that, we've identified it, and I think there's the will of the council to go ahead and fund these things. We just get one person to say, let's make it happen, so. I don't know if. know who we talk to, if we instruct Ron to open up those discussions with Dee and the others, and head from there. I'm on board.
Madam Chair, perhaps we could dovetail this discussion with the idea of a larger venue that can, that can allow for many different types of activities, but might be an opportunity to do that.
Madam Chair. You know, just right down the hall, there's a picture of the D River when it was used recreationally. And I know everyone's sold on the project, but to even get more sold, you know, take a look at that. It's wonderful, safe, warm. So. And by the way, I don't mean to deny anyone, you know, affordability of being able to eat a meal and everything. But I think our larger responsibility is to, our people that are working, and getting them a working wage. And one of the ways that you do that is building up a successful economy that relies on people that have more discretionary income. So not against anyone, but I am really for building the economy from the ground up.
And with that economy, we have to remind ourselves, we have to work on workforce and affordable housing for these people as our next big adventure, before any of it can happen.
Madam Chair, I guess one thing I want to throw back out, back to the discussion about the tribes and such, is something I trotted out a while ago. We were talking about taking over management of the D River, but I don't think it's a bad idea to start considering taking over East Devil's Lake State Park either. I think that would be an ideal venue for what we're talking about.
Do you know what the acreage is out there?
Yeah, I was trying to find that number while I was sitting here. But again, if we're going to talk about just something for, tying in with the tribes, I mean, it's amazingly, I think it's perfect, what we could do there together. But we'd find that out. But I think, no offense to the state, but I think we could do a better job and have a lot more fun with it, besides being a dog restroom.
I wanted to hear some more about possible Urban Renewal districts, but I guess we'll table that another time.
If you'd like, I can bring that to the next Urban Renewal Agency meeting that we have.
I'd like to hear what our options are.
Okay, I can outline the process and timeline better.
Great. Anyone have anything to add to the work session? We'll adjourn that meeting in one minute. We'll start the next.
Just as a reminder, between the meetings, the micro-